Good evening. Today is Monday, May 13, 2019. And this is the Joint Elected Officials Meeting of the Eugene City Council, Mayor and Eugene City Council, and the Lane County Board of Commissioners. I just want to welcome everybody in the audience and Commissioners and Councillors and Mayor to our joint meeting. At this time, I'll report that all five Lane County Commissioners are present. And I want to turn this over to Mayor Venice, who will then gavel in the meeting of the City Council, and then I'll review our format.
I've just learned I need to pound that three times. So, I thank you and welcome to the joint meeting. Eugene City Council meeting is now open.
Thank you. And we are now going to kind of give an overview of what we're doing this evening. We're going to, first of all, for the Board of Commissioners, we have our formal agenda, and that is our presentation of the Implementation Framework for the Homeless and Supportive Housing System Report Recommendations. And we have a staff presentation, which will include PowerPoint and comments by Mr. Mokr Heisky, the County Administrator, and then Mr. Manella and Mr. Chavens from the city of Eugene. We will then, following that, hear from the City Manager briefly, and then we'll go into a round of questions and comments from Commissioners and Councillors. And we have set up our timer with two-minute rounds for Councillor and Commissioner comments and questions. We'll be alternating two City Councillors, followed by one County Commissioner, followed by two City Councillors. And Mayor Venice will keep track of the Councillors in her queue, and I'll keep track of the Commissioners in the County's queue. And at this time, then, I'd like to turn this over to County Administrator Steve Mokr Heisky, who can introduce people who are making the presentation, and then we'll conclude after their presentation with comments from the City Manager. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, and Madam Mayor and Councillors. Good evening, and to the public that's here, thank you for being at this joint elected official meeting. So, you're going to hear a lot tonight from our staff and others who've been doing a lot of work focused on where we're headed in terms of addressing the needs for those unhoused in our community, the systems and infrastructure that needs to be built. And I thought, we thought, as we discussed kicking off this meeting, it'd be helpful to take a brief trip down memory lane and just be reminded of all the work that's gone into housing and homelessness in our community in the last several years. So, bear with me for a moment. Take this trip down memory lane with me, if you will. In 2014, just five years ago, the Poverty and Homelessness Board was created, and that's a collaborative between the cities of Eugene, Springfield, and rural communities, Lane County, and nonprofit service organizations throughout our community focused on strategies to improve housing stock and reduce homelessness and poverty in our community. In 2015, the City Rest Stop Program, I believe, correct me, John, if this is correct, in 2015, the Rest Stop Program was created that now serves 92 people at five sites. And the Dust to Dawn Shelter Program was also created that year in 2015. In 2016, Operation 365 was created, an effort to house 365 veterans in our community. That effort has now resulted in 529 veterans being housed since March of 2016. 529 veterans in just the past three years. In 2017, the Dust to Dawn Program expanded to 114 beds. And then in 2018, the TAC report was commissioned, the Technical Assistance Collaborative, our consultants that developed this report that you will hear more about tonight. Also, in 2018, Camp 99 was opened and temporarily served over 100 individuals in our community. Lane County invested $2 million in 91 new units of permanent supportive housing for disabled seniors, youth aging out of the foster care system, offenders reentering into our community, veterans, and chronically homeless individuals. And in 2019, just in the last few months, the Dust to Dawn Program expanded in late 2018 and into 2019 from 114 beds to 240 beds. And additional services were added at the Lindholm Service Center across the street. And importantly, and significantly for tonight, the Lane County and the city of Eugene have committed to collaborate on both short- and long-term shelter and housing investments. So, we wanted to just share that. It's just a brief overview of some of the investments that have been made by those here in this room and other of our partners throughout the community to advance. And I think you can see that there's been a lot of momentum built. There's been great collaboration and partnership between our organization and others to tackle these challenges. And so, we're excited about the framework that's going to be presented to you tonight and launching this partnership into a promising future. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Peter and Steve to walk through the work that's happened over the last few months.
Great, thanks, Steve. So, my name's Peter Chevan. I'm the city's Housing Policy Manager, AIC, and I'm joined at the table by Steve Manella, the Human Services Division Manager for Lane County. Before I get into the meat of the presentation, I want to make sure to thank the Steering Committee, whose insight and contribution was invaluable in the development of this framework. So, Mayor Venice, County Commissioners Buck and Farr, County, sorry, City Councillor Claire Saret, County Administrator Steve Mokr Heisky, City Manager John Ruiz, Poverty and Homelessness Board members Pat Walsh and Chris McAllister. So, all of these folks came together around an aspirational goal. And the work that we've been doing for the last eight weeks has been characterized by a sense of urgency, a collaborative spirit that Steve alluded to earlier, and perhaps most importantly, optimism. What we're talking about here is system transformation, and it's a heavy lift for our community. But the folks who have been contributing to the development of this framework over the last eight weeks are optimistic that this transformation can happen. So, we're in a strategic moment that will bring together disparate activities, diverse imaginations, and diffuse resources in a coordinated effort that will transform our homelessness support system. I want to bring our attention to the homeless system map that was produced by the Technical Assistance Collaborative. This was one of my early introductions to the system, and it offers a nice accounting of the components of that system and the circuitous route people travel in order to find services in that system. As I entered into it, however, I found it a little overwhelming and was having trouble figuring out how the recommendations fit into this map. And so, I developed a simplified map. And I've divided this map into three sections. The outer edges, which I'll be referring to from here on out, is the perimeter. That central piece, which appropriately enough is the core. And then, oops, and then right down here, we have emergency shelter or alternatives to shelters. So, that would be things like Dust to Dawn, car camping, the mission, not really low-barrier shelters. And this really helped me think about our system. As I said, it's divided into thirds. The outer edges are perimeter. So, on the left-hand side, over here, we have people who are coming into their first point of contact with the system. So, that's one edge. Over on this side, we have housing solutions. So, that could be housing, that could be support services to stabilize people in housing. Now, obviously, the core, centralized waitlist, coordinated entry, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, on the left-hand side, information flows into the system based on who people are and what their individual needs are. Information flows into the core. On the right-hand side, information around our housing and service suite inventory, as well as their availability, flow into the center. And in that core is where the linkages between need and resources happen. The emergency or alternative to shelters down here are where people can find some limited services, some limited shelter while we're waiting to build out that perimeter. So, TAC identified some dysfunctions in the system, referring back to the perimeter on the right, where we don't have enough contact with people experiencing homelessness, nor a deep enough understanding of their needs. On the left-hand side, obviously, there's not enough housing and not always the right supports for the right people at the right time. In the middle, our core is fragmented. Some of that's because the information isn't flowing in efficiently from the edges. Some of that is not all of the stakeholders in the system have a shared understanding around what the appropriate level of tenancy supports for people might be in a given situation, or what navigation means, what case management means. And so, all of that leads to a fragmented core, and then we don't have a low-barrier shelter at all in the city. So, from there, TAC provided us with 10 recommendations, and I'm not going to go into each of those recommendations in really any detail, but I do think it's useful to categorize those recommendations or to organize those into three categories. Building out the perimeter, so the points of contact we make with people who are experiencing homelessness on the left-hand edge. Increasing our affordable housing stock on the right-hand edge, as well as improving supports for folks in those situations. Strengthening the core, so revitalizing coordinated entry, delivering some best-practice training so that all of our stakeholders are on the same page around what should be happening, move-on strategies, tenancy supports, et cetera. And then finally, enhancing our rapid response, so recognizing that we don't have system capacity to effectively move people who are experiencing homelessness into housing and the attendant services. We need a place for folks to go, and moreover, we need some flexible funding to address immediate needs that don't fit nicely into established program descriptions and funding constraints. So, with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, and he can talk in a little more detail around each of these areas.
So, building out the perimeter, we start with outreach. And today, we have many outreach efforts. The outreach efforts that we have today are not coordinated. We have White Bird, we have Looking Glass, we have Shelter Care, we have Laurel Hills Center. They're all providing outreach services, but what we want is a more efficient outreach service and a better coordinated outreach service that serves people's health and safety. Diversion and rapid exit. Diversion is a strategy to engage people in creative problem-solving. A lot of times, when you and I or anybody is in crisis, we immediately think, well, maybe we need this. And in a lot of cases, what that "this" is for a lot of people is we need shelter and we need it immediately. Sometimes, the circumstances are that we've been living someplace. Maybe we've been staying with a friend, maybe we've been staying with family. What diversion is all about is it's working with someone, looking at what they can do to maybe get a situation where they don't need to go to shelter, or they don't need to go into one of the programs that we fund immediately. That's what diversion's all about. And the TAC recommendation talks about this in a way that there are a number of people who would not be in shelter otherwise. Landlord partnerships, we need to be able to incentivize landlords in the private sector. We're going to be talking about building permanent supportive housing, but we all know that the housing supply is a combination of what we have available in the public sector and what's available in the private sector. And in order to engage those landlords, we need to have a way that they can look at relaxing some of their screening criteria in order to help some people get into housing. And then finally, the development of 350 units of permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is housing with the service supports that people need. Not everybody needs the same level of service. What we recommend is a tiered approach, the right amount of service for the individuals involved. We know from our homeless count that the homeless population is diverse. We have 782 people who have severe and persistent mental illness who are homeless. Many of the homeless people end up in the criminal justice system or sheriff, and the budget presentation talked about the number of people in beds that are homeless and have mental illness. Strengthening the core, the core of the system is really important. We could serve an additional 1,367 more people a year if we do a few things. The first one is revitalizing our coordinated entry. We have a coordinated entry system. The coordinated entry system is the way that people get into housing, the way people get into shelter. What we need to do as a part of that system is we need to do a better job of assessing people on the way in so that we can resource them better, so that we can house them better. We need to make best-practice training available to our nonprofit agencies. We need to do this on a regular basis. In the nonprofit sector, oftentimes, there's turnover, new employees coming in, new volunteers coming in. Those employees and volunteers need training. We need to be doing that consistently rather than haphazardly. Move-on strategies. Part of the way that we make the system work is to get people to move through. Many people, after they're in housing, they recover. They're able to live out in the community. Additionally, we're able to provide with Homes for Good Section 8 certificates. If they're in a project base, Section 8, we can get them out into the community. We can get the supports out to them in the community. Tenancy supports, tenancy supports provide the basis that keep people in housing, teach people how to live. Some of those might seem obvious to you or I, but in some cases, that's a disabled person who needs housekeeping services in order to retain their unit. And then finally, an expansion of the Rapid Rehousing Program, which is short-term rent assistance and an ability to rapidly rehouse people. The key to all of this is to have a 75-bed low-barrier shelter. The analogy that's made is that, you know, you can't operate a hospital without an emergency room. The same thing happens in the homeless system. Mobile service teams are socio-medical teams that go out and respond to people's needs where they are. They include medical personnel, social service personnel, and others who are going to respond to people's needs.
Okay, great. Thanks, Steve. So, we accomplish all of these things, and that leads to fewer people entering the system due to diversion and rapid exit activities. For those who do enter the system, we have better, more accurate understandings of their particular needs. We've increased the housing inventory and support services that complement the housing. More accurate, real-time trafficking of available resources, a combination of better understanding of needs, increased capacity and accurate tracking leads to dramatically fewer people experiencing homelessness. For those whose needs we are not able to meet through long-term housing strategies, quicker, more customizable, short-term service provision also arrives through this framework. So, how we get there? The nice thing about the TAC report is that it essentially told us what adds the system needs. 19 staff, 350 units of permanent supportive housing, a 75-bed low-barrier shelter. So, our initial efforts in developing a framework oriented towards detailing out the phased-in additions recommended in the TAC report. As we began this work, however, we recognized early on that to do that with confidence requires negotiating tricky questions of governance and accountability, roles, and ongoing financial commitments. Negotiations are continuing, and in the same spirit of urgency, optimism, and collaboration that has characterized the Steering Committee's work to date. However, recognizing the urgency of our community's need, rather than waiting for those negotiations to conclude, we felt it necessary to establish targets and principle towards which we organize our efforts. This framework represents those targets. As you can see, most of those recommendations, we believe, can be achieved in three years. Given the complexity and costs related to permanent supportive housing development, we're giving ourselves five years to reach that item. I do want to call your attention to two items in particular. Our first row, Temporary Shelter Navigation Center at our current D2D site, is an experimental ramping up of services and enhanced shelter at an existing site as a bridge strategy until we can stand up a more durable, low-barrier shelter navigation center. The other piece I want to bring your attention to is the second-to-last row, the Strategic Initiative Manager. So, that concept is a nod towards a shared commitment and intergovernmental leadership that will be required to make this happen and will help to find the governance structure and roles and ongoing financial commitment moving forward. So, with that in mind, I'm going to turn it back over to Steve to talk about some of the immediate initiatives that will make a difference.
So, in year one, we need to make a big difference, and the way we're going to go about that is the first action would be to put a navigation center on-site at the D2D site to provide case management, medical, behavioral health, alcohol and drug, and other services to the over 200 people who reside on that site. The second piece of work to begin is looking at the siting and the design of the 75-bed shelter. A siting process involves including the public in looking at sites and looking at the potential design of the facility. Developing and implementing additional street outreach. This would focus on serving people in safe spots. We know that with the recommendations that we bring forward, that we're not going to be able to shelter or house everybody immediately. We know we're going to have people who are out in the community. We want to better serve those people by providing better outreach to them, including additionally some medical outreach. The Commons at MLK is a project that Lane County and Homes for Good have been working on. We look at the groundbreaking of that property during this next year and the construction, and then the availability of those units by the beginning of 2020. Strengthening the system coordination, that's going to happen by adding some diversion, adding some technical staff to our coordinated entry, and by implementing with the cooperation of Homes for Good some of our move-on strategies. Along the way, we're going to need some flexible funds. We need barrier busters. Sometimes, what people need can be very small, and it can make a great difference. Those things include things like getting somebody a birth certificate, helping somebody get their driver's license, taking care of a situation where maybe they had a modest debt with a property management company that needs to be settled. Maybe it's mediating a dispute. And then finally, as Peter had mentioned earlier, we envision the hiring of someone to help us with a collective impact process. That's a fancy term. What it means is involving the community, but also, a big piece of this is that the resources that we're going to need to make this happen are going to be very big. And so, in order to catalyze that, we need somebody who can help bring together people from all sectors of the community to contribute to this effort. Finally, the work that we've started that Steve Mokr Heisky mentioned earlier needs to continue. We need to continue our efforts at Dust to Dawn. We need to continue the car camping program, the rest stops, our court program with EPD and cahoots, the FUSE project, which is geared towards the top 100 folks that are in the jail, law enforcement, emergency medical, and emergency rooms. And we need to continue our work with the Veterans Initiative.
So, our next steps are to identify a Strategic Initiatives Manager, continue to work on details related to governance, roles, and ongoing financial commitments, and return to our respective bodies with recommendations related to those items. And so, I'm going to turn it over to John here.
Just real quickly and wrap up, I want to say thank you to Steve and Peter. They've done some outstanding work. There's other staff that have been involved. Karen Gaffney is a good example of that, who I think has done some amazing work in her department. We have Reagan Watchess in our office that is doing a lot of super work as well, and there's others that have been engaged in this work. And so, there's many people to thank to this point. I think this is a heavy lift for the community as well as all of the elected officials and staff. But from my perspective, it's well worth the lift, and it's well worth the investment, and it's well worth the urgency to do it. It's an aggressive timeline, but the partnerships that we have formed between the city and county It's an aggressive timeline, but the partnerships that we have formed between the city and county and some of the other agencies and nonprofits in the community, I think is a really interesting moment in time that allows us to continue that good work and build on that. So, that's, I think, a real positive. It's going to take shared commitment and accountability on all of our parts and the broader community. We think of this, or it's sometimes thought of as a public-sector work only, or the public sector and the nonprofit work only, but it really is a community commitment and accountability that has to be shared if we really are going to move and transform the system in which we currently operate. The other piece, at least for us, is it's an opportunity to pilot, to implement, to move, and then continuously adapt. And so, my suggestion will be is that we don't wait until we've exhausted an entire strategic plan and work plan before we start moving forward. We need to move forward. There are some great first, second, third-year tasks to move forward with. Today, we're not asking, at least from a council perspective, for you to make financial commitments today. What we're really looking for is for you to say, yes, this is a course of action. We have commitment to trying to make this work. We will come back to you as a council with further recommendations as we continue to work with the county. What does it look like from one-time and ongoing financial commitments, what it looks like for governance, scope, responsibility, partnerships, and all those kinds of things? We'll be coming back to you, and you'll be able to take some very specific action on financial commitments as well. But from our perspective, this is absolutely the right time to be doing this work, and what I would hope when Steve Mokrheyski in three and five years gives us the same timeline, what we'll know by 2024 is that all of our unsheltered, single adults are sheltered, and that will be a great landmark to move towards. And this is the start of that. So, we're here to answer questions.
Well, thank you very much. I think at this time, Mayor Venice and I will be making a list of, in my case, commissioners and her case counselors that want to make any comments. We'll be doing this on a two-minute round. Are there any commissioners that want to make any comments, so I can write down who wants to speak and in what order? None? Okay. Oh, no. You want to speak? Okay, I'm all right. All right. Anybody else besides Commissioner Buck?
May I opt to speak later in the process?
So, why don't you go first and call on two counselors, and then I'll call on Commissioner Buck.
Okay.
And then two more counselors, and then Commissioner Bernie.
All right. I have Counselor Clark in the queue, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the report. I appreciate the opportunity to see the larger policy pieces around the strategy. I was hoping to hear something today because we have what I think is a large-scale event that's going to happen in a couple of days, and I didn't hear anybody addressing any of the short-term issues around that. We have the state putting new policy into place that no one can be on the river at night in two days, and they're going to enforce that as near as I understand it. Or do we have any kind of planned response for what that's going to mean for the number of people that I believe will be displaced?
You know, I think there's two different conversations. One is the TAC report really is talking about a long-term strategy for moving our unsheltered into shelter, and those that enter into our community or enter into homelessness are put into that system. The other conversation is, in the current situation that we are, what are appropriate responses to any numbers of things? And so, I think that's also a conversation that we can have. Our intent wasn't to have that conversation at this particular table.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'll just comment on this and say, every human animal I know operates on one of two motivations, and what this is telling me is we're trying to get people to, we're trying to deal with what motivates people and where they go and where they're housed, and provide them more opportunities. Every person operates and takes action based on opportunity and necessity, or some relative degree of one or the other. For me, this report's goals seem to be, we're going to provide a whole new set of opportunities, and that's a good thing. That's fine. But all carrot and no stick seems to me not a successful strategy because, from my perspective, all of these programs have rules that they're going to ask people to abide by, and there are those who don't want to abide by rules. And my concern is that we've built an exquisite and a little more expensive pile of carrots here, and there are no strategy pieces around sticks at all, and asking people to, and talking about the things that we would like to see people not do. I run out of time, so.
Okay. Counselor Semple.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. You have heard the first part of it quite a few times, so I'm really interested in what we're going to do to get that part done. I appreciate that there's a timeline. I'm not sure it's the same timeline I would have chosen, but the big question is, how are we going to pay for this? And how much do we think it's going to cost? I'm not hearing anything about what our goal financially will be, or how soon we have to have it. I mean, budget is two more weeks, so if we need to hire somebody in the next year, we need to have money to pay for this person. And how much is the city paying? How much is the county paying? You know, how long does it take to hire somebody? So, can I get some more answers?
Yeah, so I think there's a couple of pieces to that. One is, we didn't want to go through what will be many, many hours of specifics around governance, scope, and financing without having a general okay from the elected officials that this is the course of action that we're wanting to take. And so, that's important for us to be able to know that, and then we can fill in some of the details. From the council perspective, as you know, there's $1.9 million that you have set aside for the implementation of the TAC to include the 75-bed shelter. And so, our intent will be is to take this framework and this course of action, work with the county on just the questions you talked about, and then come back to the council with some recommendations on how to spend some of that $1.9 million in support of moving this forward on this particular timeline. And then, recognizing that also in future budgets, there'll be additional ongoing commitments financially that, as a city, we will also need to make.
I find it really difficult to decide whether or not I want to go forward when I have absolutely no idea what kind of money we're talking about. You know, is this a $50 million project? Is it $500,000? I just would like some more information. Yes, I want to go forward. We did all this study, but some of the things on here, the MLK housing, that's already in the get-go. I just would like some more information, and if it's got to be done so quick, 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 then I want the information quick, quick, quick. So, I don't know. I'll be interested to hear what other people have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Buck?
So, first, I'll get this out of the way. Because this involves St. Vincent de Paul, I need to disclose my potential conflict of interest. My father runs St. Vincent de Paul, but I don't think it's an actual conflict of interest here. And in this whole scenario, as an overview, we have to make a concerted effort to change the way that we are doing things within this community, a fundamental change in how services are actually being provided in this community. What we have now, and we saw in the very, one of the second slide, the homeless map, is a mess. It would be hard enough for me to figure out what to do, let alone people without resources who are extremely vulnerable in our community. What I think is a game-changer in this particular conversation is the navigation center, the mobile service teams, which can actually go out and service people in our rural communities who are not being serviced now or in very limited ways, and the coordinated services. Right now, we have lots of people in different areas trying to, you know, work on certain things that they are committed to, and they partner the best they can, but it is no centralized system. And I think that's absolutely, like, a minimum thing that we need to do is making sure that all these services are being coordinated in a very effective manner. And that can flow through to the navigation center, where different people have different services, that they're all centralized for people, and then those mobile teams can go out and service different people within our community. So, I just want to point out the fact that what is being presented here by the implementation team is fundamentally different than what we have going on now, and it's crucial to actually changing the system to be effective in our community. And I would, you know, I'm a strong supporter, and I would urge the support of all the members here at the table.
Thank you. Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. Yeah, this is just the preliminary kind of taste of what's coming, so I know we can't cover everything here, and I think some good questions have been raised. I certainly want to know what the price tag is going to be, but I don't want to delay implementation until I get, I think what we're looking for, are we committed to doing this? And I'm committed to doing it. I'm expecting to be prudent around the cost, but I think we need to do it because the alternative is going to be a huge influx and increase in the number of homeless people in the community that we are not dealing with effectively. I also recognize that there are many different kinds of homeless people. There's situationally homeless people, there's chronically homeless people, and there's also folks that we classify as travelers or vagrants, and I think each one requires a different solution. Some of those require the compassion because their condition warrants that compassion, but there's others whose behavior needs to be dealt with in a different way. Yeah, we can, of course, accommodate that. Absolutely. The Community Safety Initiative that we're talking about incorporates some of that behavior-related activity as well. So, I think, for me, at this initial stage, I think what we need to telegraph is, yes, we want to try to use the new paradigm. We want to come at this in a new way, but we do need to know what the price tag will be as soon as we can reasonably have it, but I don't want that to first stall the effort that needs to take place. And as I mentioned at the Budget Committee meeting, this isn't all about the money. This also requires a significant degree of commitment, that we will commit ourselves to do this, and we'll figure out a way to do it because coordination is just a piece of it, and that's where the commitment's required. So, yeah, I'm looking for a monetary number that I can begin to look at coordinating with, but I also have to look at the commitment on the part of not just we, elected officials at this table, but also from the human service sector and the other people related to it if we really want to make this happen.
Thank you. Counselor Cyret.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and the comments. So, I don't know if this is helpful to some of those of you who are grappling with some of this lack of detail. I think it's, I think you can support this proposed implementation plan as a concept. Is the timeline the right one? Are the high-level strategies the right strategies, or should they be different? If it seems right, if what we've laid out as the Steering Committee seems right to a majority of both of these bodies, then our staff and Lane County staff would dig into those details, bring us back projected costs, bring us back projected timeline for each of the more detailed aspects of the project, and we would get to decide as a body at that point if those costs are something we want to bear and figure out or not. And then, we would have to revamp some things if we came up against a set of concerns that we couldn't address in the way that we're thinking about here. So, you know, there are budget concerns, concerns about shared jurisdiction, and so I think it's just thinking about, as a long-term strategy, is this a valid approach? Is this something that the council can support? And if so, you know, it's a joint effort that we're launching with our partners at the county. And I see the report, you know, just pointing to ways we can tighten up our current system, which works in many ways but isn't being fully utilized and is missing some pieces. And so, some of those missing pieces are a publicly-owned low-barrier shelter and a dedicated manager to oversee how we do this work jointly. There's been a lot of demands on the city to do this work when it's really a joint county-city responsibility, and I'll have some more to say if I'm able to take another round later.
Okay. Commissioner Bernie?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. All I said was I will want to weigh in, but I don't know when.
Okay.
I think you're sort of given the call.
Okay. Give us, when you're ready, let us know. That's all I'm asking. Commissioner Farr, are you ready?
For now, yes.
For now? Well, we want you to be comfortable.
Well, let me take my shoes off.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Mayor. You know, Steve, you presented a chronological history of the last few years. I have a chronological history in my hand here. It says, 1947, Eugene allows camping by returning World War II vets. It is six pages of chronological history. We've done a lot of things, Heather, through the years, and you brought this up. We've done a lot of things. We've created a little bit of a mess. The jigsaw puzzle in the center, Peter, that you put up on the screen, is, we've done a lot of things, but we're not necessarily making them all click on all the same cylinders. And I'm not going to go into details of financing, and I'm not going to go into details of the basic elements or the deeper elements of the plan, but a couple of real high-level things that I'd like to talk about. One is something that Claire mentioned, and that is, I think it was Claire that said the partnerships, the fact that we're working together. And there were six members of the committee that brought you this report. The staff did the work. There were six members of the committee, and four of them are sitting at the table. That's me and Heather, and the mayor, and Claire. We also have Pat Walsh in the audience. We also have Chris McAllister in the audience. And we put a lot of work and a lot of thought into this, and we're not, what you have before you is a concept. With some timelines, if you look at the timeline chart, it'll take it, it takes it all the way out, five years. But significantly, if you want to look at something that John Reese pointed out, we want to make an immediate impact, and a part of that is linking to existing efforts. We have a lot of things going on right now that are kind of a disjointed jigsaw puzzle. A part of what we're doing is bringing these things together. And Counselor Semple, some of the things that we're going to do won't cost a lot. Some of them will cost frightening amounts of money, but some of the things we're going to do won't cost a lot, and we need to take advantage of the things that we are doing okay in an uncoordinated fashion and coordinate them and do them better. So, in the section that's making an immediate impact, in my last 10 seconds, there, we have six bullet points about things that we're going to do right out of the gate to demonstrate that we are going to be making an impact for five years to come, but starting
Thank you. Counselor Evans.
So, I have a $64,000 question. How and where does our partners in the City of Springfield fit into this?
I can give you a quick answer.
I'm happy to, I can try to take that one. You know, we have that conversation with, John and I do with our peer at the City of Springfield, and what I have heard back is that they're committed to working with families, single families, single-parent families, as well as joint-parent families, as well as veterans, but that's where their focus is at the age of the game.
So, they're not necessarily willing to play into this pool?
We've invited them to participate in the Steering Committee effort, and they have declined to date.
We have one person from Springfield here.
Can I take some of your time?
Go for it, Joe.
I have to talk this way to speak to Greg. This is a little awkward. First of all, $64,000 question isn't as hard as it used to be when you and I were watching the $64,000 question. I spoke to several Springfield counselors this afternoon. They expressed their apologies that they are in a work session as we are doing this. I think through, not through municipal bonds, but through the property taxes that we all pay in Springfield, they're invested in this. I think you're going to see more participation as we move forward, and, sir, you can always call one of them and ask them that $64,000 question. I think we're going to see, for example, on the Housing Policy Board, that group is going to be revisiting its strategic plan moving forward, and there will be two Springfield city councilors participating in. city councilors participating in that at the request of the board. I think we're seeing a more and more regional effort because that's what this actually is.
Counselor Zelenka.
So I agree with Commissioner Buck. What we have done over the years has been quite, quite a lot. We've done it fairly well, but it hasn't been done well enough. And I've been working on this for 25 years with, before Steve and I had gray hair, and this fundamentally is very different. It's a different approach, and it's different in its tactics, and, and in my mind has a sense of not only urgency but success that could come out of it, which is different from what we've done before. The navigators and the outreach, the fixing our system with the coordinated entry, focus on housing rather than services, the low-barrier shelter are all good examples of things that we, taken out of the TAC report, that we can implement to make this better. I agree that we're behind the eight ball, Emily, but this has baked a very, very long time. This isn't something that was created overnight, and it's not going to go away overnight. I appreciate the enthusiasm, but this is a truly a place where if we, where if we do go slow, we can go fast later. And so getting it right and getting it set up will allow us to then implement this. If we get to close to zero in five years, that will be a miracle. And so going, going slow now to go fast later is great. I support the plan and doing the short-term immediate actions that are, that are in here while the city manager and the county administrator figure out how to get it done, bring back a work plan, bring back a financing plan. I am disappointed that yet again our brethren at Springfield are not at the table, but it may be that as it may. I really like this plan, and I'm prepared to make a motion towards the end of this that in support of the plan and encouraging the city manager to bring back a detailed work plan and financial plan in due course.
Okay. Commissioner Bozovic.
Thank you. First, let me say I'm excited about having a coordinated strategic plan for this for the first time, where we're trying to put all these, you know, multiple pieces of the puzzle together and, and make them work together in a much more efficient manner. I mean, you know, that sounds like a good conservative way of doing things. Efficiency is always good. And having a strategic plan, anyone that came to my state of the county knows I believe in strategic plans. That all said, I share Counselor Semple's concern for costs. You know, as I'm, was, you know, participating in some meetings today by phone in Salem about proposals around PERS, even if the current proposal that was put forward by the Majority Caucus passes, we're looking at a 24% PERS rate in 19 to 21 BIM and a 27% PERS rate in the following BIM. That's if they pass and if they can still make the 7.2% return rate. So I know there's going to be cost pressure on, on local government over this time period. I also share Counselor Clark's concern that there does need to be some thought around the stick. Anyone that watched Seattle is dying might understand that. But one of the things I don't want to have forgotten here is, you know, we talk about the core and the periphery. There's a piece outside of that, which is just generalized housing cost, period. We can't forget to continue to work on buildable lands inventory because the cost of building that permanent supportive housing goes up because we're getting down to the last pieces of land that are high-cost, hard to build on, have some kind of issue with infrastructure. You know, so we could make that less costly if we work on, in general, making buildable land less costly.
Thank you. I have two counselors who haven't spoken yet. Do Counselor Taylor, Counselor Yeh, do you have any comments at this time? Counselor Taylor, go for it.
Thank you. I think the fact that we're cooperating is excellent, and the coordination is a good idea, too, so that people, different agencies aren't doing some of the same thing. But it's much bigger than the county. We need the cooperation of, of the state, actually. It is not, if, if we solve everything, what's to keep everybody else from coming here because we solved it? I think it's a, people don't just stay in one little place. I think it's really important to get, it should be the federal government and the state, but certainly the state. Some of us remember who we used to have institutions, mental institutions, and you didn't have all the mentally ill people on the streets because they had a place to be. And that's, I think, a good place to start. I was disturbed that I didn't see sponsors mentioned as one of the organizations that was consulted. I think they have a really good plan, and I like the way they, they do transitional work instead of permanent. And I think I have toured their facility and talked to some of the people who were there who were looking forward to moving on. Thank you.
Counselor Yeh?
Thank you, Mayor. I think people have brought up some good issues that there are going to be a lot of costs associated with this plan, but there is a huge cost of doing nothing. So we really don't have the option of not tackling how we're going to figure out how to pay for this. I think that this implementation plan is very well thought out. I really want to thank the folks who were on the team who did the hard work of figuring out from the report how to put it into a way that makes sense and that we can all start chipping away at it. And I look forward to seconding Alan's motion.
I'll call you after I finish my remarks. I just want to say, in response to Commissioner Buck, your statement that you want to know if we're strong supporters of this, I want to say I am a strong supporter of this, both in the approach and in the concept. I'd like to know more about whether there are fees or taxes or other revenues that are going to be a part of this effort, and certainly I'd like to see some public comment and perspective from the public, both the general public as well as the various partners out there, and make sure that we are listening to them. And last but not least, I think that I would like to move beyond a general, even though I've said in, in response to the inquiry, I do think you're hearing enough, staff, you're hearing enough about the support that people have for this to move to the next level. But I think that then, well, what else is expected? If it's only just, well, we're strong supporters, go ahead and solve this problem without any additional revenue, without any change in any budgets, then I'm not sure we're going to get the change we want. So I'm in favor of the approach, I'm in favor of the concept, and I'd like a lot more information on how we're going to actually implement it. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I have two counselors wanting a second round, but I will just jump in. Also, talking about the costs, I agree with Counselor Yeh that inaction is not really, is very costly to us. I will also say that, you know, nine of the 10 TAC recommendations have to do with streamlining services, and there are cost savings associated with streamlining services. So that also needs to be calculated, both in terms of repeated services, what it costs us just to continue to deliver services to the same people who are cycling through the system, and the human cost of people accessing services, falling out of the system, accessing services again, falling out of the system. There's a human toll. So there is a, you know, I think we have to factor in the, the strength there. And I will say, on accountability, having come out of the provider world, that people who access services ultimately agree to a treatment plan. I mean, they ultimately, that's the pathway. And so what we're trying to do is to create an efficient access service and a level of accountability once people get into the system and tracking them. That's the coordinated entry system, that's the whole, you know, understanding who you're working with and what the options are. So accountability is built into the system, it's not a free ride for anyone who comes in. They are working on their issues. And the final thing I will say about this is, when we talk about ending homelessness, what we're really talking about is people who fall into homelessness don't stay there because we have a good delivery system. We are not fixing the larger problem of why people are falling into homelessness, which is another conversation around equity and education and mental health and addiction services and our economic structure. That is another piece of the puzzle, but we, what we are doing is talking about a very coordinated, streamlined, and efficient system to bring people back into services. So I, do you have someone else who wants to speak?
Yeah. Commissioner Bernie?
I'm just waiting to watch this. Okay, there we go. I don't think there's anybody at this table that isn't committed to trying to get everyone unsheltered sheltered. I do not think that's the issue. Personally, I absolutely will support the out-the-gate items that Commissioner Buck mentioned, and I wanted to listen to our two county commissioners that were on the Steering Committee before I made any remarks. However, I do want to say, I think in this fast-moving, fast-paced world, when people talk about different conversations, everything is related to everything. And I don't think we can, I think part of the reason we have this problem is we tend to isolate all the different things that impact and create the circumstance we're trying to deal with. So I absolutely will vote to approve the out-the-gate first year, especially, and Heather, I apologize, but I wrote down that you had mentioned the Navigation Center, mobile support, and a third item that you felt was critical.
Coordinated services.
Coordinated, okay. Thank you. But I would like to say this. I would have trouble saying here that I would approve any three- or five-year plan. I would approve continuous project improvement and planning. I think we are going to see things that this group is not now considering. I think that we will see, in fact, the degree to which the balance of enforcement and opportunity optimizes itself as we begin experimenting with this. And I disagreed at our last meeting, and I still disagree with a couple of the assumptions that were made that this is the basis of. As I recall, it did not factor in the very large numbers of other homeless youth that school districts were reporting in our county and their communities. I find this, which is good, it's good we're making a commitment, I'm all for it, but I find this more system-centered than human-centered. And I'm always a bit concerned when I see that one initial solution is to hire somebody else to fix the problem. So I'm just letting you know that I will support this, I'm for it, I have concerns, but I think those concerns will naturally come up as we start moving forward.
Great. I have Counselor Cyret and then Counselor Clark for a second round.
Thank you. Well, Commissioner Bernie, you gave me a little, a nice little segue. I wanted to share some thoughts I shared at the Steering Committee about how I would like us to proceed in some of these items, and I compared it to how the City of Eugene tackled some of our downtown initiatives with our quicker, cheaper, lighter concept. And so thinking about the way in which we pilot ideas, and if they worked, we kept them, and if they didn't work, we let them go and we moved on to something else. And so that we're not getting set in a trench about how we implement these strategies. And also, I compared it to the idea of medical trials for new drugs where the, partway into the medical trial, the, they realize, the researchers realize what they have is very, very effective and is going to save lives, and so they cut the medical trial short and they get that life-saving medication to market. And so if we're piloting things that we see are clearly getting positive results, the results that we're seeking, that we would stop piloting them and move to full implementation. So pilot, assess, implement, assess, and adjust as needed, I think, is how we should be looking at this work. And then to address some of the comments about, you know, asking, are we asking people to make different choices? I do think the City of Eugene's Community Court is a venue where we are offering people the opportunity to make different choices in an environment that creates accountability, and we've seen some success there, and we've made a commitment to continuing that court. And I think that's a small place, but an important place, that we are asking something of people in order for them to make good on some harm they might have caused in the community. And then in terms of cost, you know, just to remind folks that Appendix E of the original TAC report does outline some cost estimates. Now, they're just high, high-level estimates, and, and our actual costs may not look exactly like that, but I think they can be a good reference for those who are anxious to get a preview of potential costs.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that my initial remarks were really more about a high-level analysis of the strategy that we're trying to keep it at today. I agree with several of the tactical pieces in here that I think they'll add significantly, but from a, from a, an overhead, a 30,000-foot strategic point of view, this seems unbalanced to me in its response to how we're dealing with this problem. The other issue for me is that I don't see clearly what our goals are. I see some specifics about numbers of beds and about tactical deployment of personnel and new personnel, but I don't see, how will this decrease homelessness in our community? And by how much? And can we say anything like that? Can we set a goal that this is going to have a 25% margin, mark, 25% impact on decreasing homelessness in our communities? Anybody comfortable saying anything like that?
So, so there are some pieces in, in the TAC report based on modeling that they did that, that we can share with you. So for example, diversion and rapid exit could move 20, between 20 and 30% of the people that are currently unsheltered away from the system. So that, so that would be a number. 350 units of, of permanent supportive housing is also a number. And, and so there, we could do calculations, but without actually seeing how they operate on the ground in our community, it's difficult to project with certainty. And so I think what our intention is, the particular formula we are not totally understanding of, but the activities, the concepts, and the work that happens based on those recommendations will improve outcomes and reduce the number of people who are unsheltered in our community.
By how much?
What I would say is, the TAC report analysis is a snapshot in time, but what it said, what it does say is, if you implement all of these items, and, and they have to be implemented as a package, you can't cherry pick, that the intent is to, it's often called functional zero, but what it means is, is those single adults that are unsheltered in our community will, will be able to be sheltered, and anybody that becomes unsheltered will quickly get into the system and move to be sheltered. And so the intent of the TAC report is essentially get us to what they call functional zero. It doesn't eliminate homelessness, but it gets us to a place where the, the unsheltered single adults in our community are sheltered or on a path to sheltered, to being sheltered either through diversion or transitional or rapid housing, rehousing, or permanent supportive shelters, or in a waystation of emergency shelter for a short period of time.
So it sounds like we should expect a significant decrease in the number of homeless?
We should. Yes, yeah.
So do we have metrics and a timeline for measuring that?
So I just asked Peter to go back to the, this one right here. So I think the short answer to your question is, the goal is functional zero, which the TAC report said we'd get to functional zero if we do these things. These are the tactics, specific approaches, that we're saying we need to collaborate on investing in. If we do these things, we'll get to functional zero. And I would also say, Commissioner Bernie's point about, and Commissioner Cyret and others have said, we need to adjust. We need to recognize there are going to be changing dynamics, and this is a fluid process and plan, so we're going to have to maintain some level of flexibility.
I can't wait to see the budgeting. I don't know that I agree that this will take us to functional zero, when from my perspective, it's unbalanced about how humans make up their mind about how they're going to behave. And with regard to the part about our friends in Springfield, I would say, I too wish they would join us at the table, but I'm concerned that we're doing several things that keep them from the table, and we don't seem to care. And I sat with the mayor of Springfield on Friday in a meeting, and she told me, point-blank, you may say this out loud in a public meeting, that the conversation that we're having around the public safety payroll tax has her and her council very unhappy with the idea of working with the City of Eugene. And we don't seem to care that it bothers them. So I guess I would say that I can understand why it's hard for them at times to work with us when we seem so unwilling to work with them. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Madam Mayor. Alan. You said you'd been
Allen, you said you'd been working on this for a long time, and you and I have been working on this for a long time.
Almost as long as you've had.
No, I'm going to refute that. In 1995, I first met you, when Ruth Bascom appointed me to the Human Services Commission, and you were the chair of the Human Services Commission at the time, so you were there before me. But, but really, what I would like to point out is, since then, you've done a lot of things. Well, I got a picture of Steve Manella with curly, dark hair from those same days. But, but what I'm going to point out is, we've done a lot of things since then. And if we were looking at that landscape today, the landscape that you and I were looking at in 1995, this would be a daunting, impossible task. But we have done a lot of things in the meantime. You know, in 1995, the council, Mr. Chair, the Council Committee to Finance Affordable Housing recommended a utility tax to fund affordable housing. Would have given us a million bucks a year at the time. If we'd passed it then, we'd have had a great nest egg of things to, of housing initiatives under our belt today. That same year, the Eugene Service Station, now known as the Lindholm Center, we opened that in 1995. So we think, thinking back on the years, and 1997 was when the Council Committee on Homelessness and Youth first met, and that was the mayor and two councils, it was Torrey, Farr, and Lee. And we, we wrote the city of Eugene's camping ordinance. So things have happened, but the point is, what I'm encouraged by is that things are different today, we're proposing different things. And Heather, you mentioned the mobile outreach teams. Mobile outreach teams can identify people who can access services that are already in place that they're not accepting, accessing already. For instance, senior and disabled services. We know that there are seniors in the community who have entitled services that they're not accessing right now. So we can take a great bite just by fully utilizing the systems that we have in place. I'm encouraged. There's a lot of things we can do, and I'd like to offer words of encouragement. And today, we've never had the frequent use of system engagement plan before. Today, we have that in place. I'm encouraged. We have things happening right now. It's a different time, Allen, than you and I experienced in 1995.
Okay. Allen, you're up.
You know, also in 1995, as the chair of the Human Services Commission, I made a jaunt over across the river to the city council in Springfield and asked them if they would pony up and pay their fair share of the Human Services funds. And they said, basically, no. And that's been longstanding resistance to do that. So I certainly wouldn't take that 25-year of history and lay it at the feet of a recent disagreement with the city council in Springfield. With regard to hiring somebody, Joe, my experience with government, and business for that matter, is that if proposals and plans don't have a very specific place to land with a very specific person who's in charge of it, I think they don't get done. And that's why I think having someone that is the point person on this, whether they be at the city of Springfield, or city of Eugene, or at the county, that's bird-dogging this, it will help this dramatically. So I support that manager position to help move this through the processes. Not only the navigating really hard for homeless folks to get through that system, it's now, navigating our system is difficult as well. So with that, I move that the city council support the homeless services system improvement plan framework, that the city manager move forward on the immediate actions over the next year, and that we direct the city manager to bring back for council approval a work plan, budget, financial plan, and performance measures to identify success as soon as practicable.
Second. Any further discussion among counselors? Ready for a vote? All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay. We hadn't planned on having a vote tonight, so I guess if there's any other commissioners who want to make some remarks, we can continue. Our joint meeting's supposed to go till seven, so we're, still have some more time. Any other commissioners want to make any remarks? I will say that, that regarding the participation of the UN High Commissioner on Human Rights, or the US government, or the other 11 cities in Lane County, or the state of Oregon, I hope we do get help from all those people, I really do. But I'm not going to wait on this report that was done at the expense of the city of Eugene, Lane County, and then the staff work that's been done, and the great work of our, of our implementation team. I think we ought to keep moving. And what I hopeful other communities will see is that this is something that's going to help their community, and they're going to go, wow, we could really benefit from the good work that's already been done around, by the city and county staff. And so I don't want to say, no way will I accept the help of the UN High Commissioner if they want to help us deal with our problem, or President Donald Trump, or the Congress of the United States, or the state of Oregon. All of that help is great. I hope we get it, but that doesn't really solve our problem. We got to keep moving on it, we got to keep working on it, and that's why I think you're seeing the support you've seen tonight from the city.
Commissioner Bernie?
I'm going to make a request, and that request is that, first off, I've lived in Springfield not quite as long as I've lived in Eugene, and I really don't believe in my heart that the way you bring people into a collaborative process is by dismissing or demeaning them when they're not here, and they shouldn't have to be here to defend themselves. I also want to share that I called a couple of city councilors and I asked if they were invited to this meeting, and they said no. So I'm only going to request that we, as a county, and we as a city of Eugene, and we as the same place, if you're 30,000 feet high looking down on us, not be so quick to judge and be a little quicker to outstretch hands and see if we can't engage all of our communities. That's my request.
Counselor Pryor.
Yeah, well, speaking of higher level, it, I think it bears reminding that this is a conversation about homelessness and shelter, and what we can do to try to prevent it and accommodate it. And in some of my previous life in the human services system, one of the goals we were always trying to achieve was what we called self-sufficiency, to get people to a place, and I don't know what that would look like, oftentimes, you couldn't describe what that looked like, but people to a place of self-sufficiency, where they were not dependent on a system, or a handout, or something else in order to get along. And while I think that's integrated with this, part of that system of self-sufficiency is absolutely housing. And so we must, as part of this, recognize that housing is one of the fundamentals to anybody achieving self-sufficiency. But the other part that really wasn't mentioned, that's why I really wanted to bring it up, is the notion of employment. We need jobs, and we need jobs that pay decent wages, because I can't afford an apartment, especially in this market, if I don't have a decent job. And so, yes, we need to provide all of the things that are here. We need to make sure that there is housing, and there are opportunities, and there are those kinds of things available. But we also have to make sure that the people in this area can get jobs that pay a salary that allows them to rent these places, or to buy these places to live. So in, the definition of self-sufficiency is housing, but is also employment. And I don't think we want to lose that aspect of this in our conversations about how we can advance the housing initiative, is how can we do that in a way that also recognizes people need jobs? They need money in order to pay for all of this.
Commissioner Bozovic?
Thank you. So we've kind of talked around the issue of costs and all that, so I wanted to turn to my administrator and ask him whether he's put into his budget, as we are in the middle of our budget right now, about the first year cost. Sorry, I'm just asking our county administrator about the first year cost and whether he's built that into our budget, which we are in the middle of right now with our budget committee.
Thank you, Commissioner, Mr. Chair. We include in the county administrator's proposed budget, which the budget committee, the county budget committee will consider approval of on Thursday, includes 50% of the funding for three new positions. One is this strategic initiatives, I think it was defined as a strategic initiatives manager. This is a barrier buster at the strategic and systems level to do this coordination and deliver the results, such as a navigation and shelter center and other pieces, as well as to position barrier buster, technical frontline positions. So 50% of those three positions are funded in our requested budget and then, in our proposed budget, and then we've asked the city of Eugene to fund the other 50%, which the city manager addressed initially. We've also included 50% of the cost of the expanded dust-to-dawn beds that were added this year, so to bring up to around 200, 240 beds for next year again. So we've included 50% of those three positions, as well as the dust-to-dawn funding in next year's budget. And then the additional investments that we, that are called for in future years, we anticipate we'll continue these conversations with our partners at the city, and then go through our budget process to recommend the appropriate amount from the county.
Any other comments? Betty? Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. I wonder if anyone's looking at the people who are becoming homeless at the same time that you're dealing with the ones who are homeless, and the reasons behind it, and the people who utilities are cut off and they can't afford to re, to re-establish them, people whose cars are towed, they have a big fee to pay. Is there any thought of helping to keep people in their homes? It's, it's very easy if you're living on the edge, even our payroll tax could do it to somebody, maybe. It's very easy if you're living on the edge to have something happen that you can't manage, and then you're out.
So we have a very robust homeless prevention program, which includes things that I mentioned earlier, which are barrier busters, that help people with those expenses that come up that allow them to stay in their housing.
I met a person who said she was having to take her sewage to her backyard. I didn't report her because everything was cut off. She lived in a decent-looking house from the front. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, the board of commissioners will be adjourned. We're starting again tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM, right here in Harris.